Good evening. Welcome to December, September 19th, 2018 Zoning Board of Appeals meeting. This meeting is being audio and video recorded in accordance with the open meeting laws of the state of Massachusetts. Tonight, we have four hearings. We start with Nine Fruit Street. Nine Fruit Street, the applicant has submitted a request to continue this public hearing until 10:17. He is working on plans, and they are not ready this evening. Do I have a motion to continue the public hearing for Nine Fruit Street to 10:17 at...
Open to you? To 10:17? That's the moment.
At 7:15 PM? Do we have a second? Discussion?
What plans is he proposing?
Remember, we reached the last meeting, we had asked him to provide us with a plan view and an elevation view of the property, so that's what he's working on. So he wasn't prepared yet this evening. Any questions from the public with regard to this? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. At 7:15, which is in 11 minutes, we have 4-6 Hill Street. So while we're waiting for that, why don't we try to review the July 12 minute meetings?
It doesn't matter if you have the correct phone for a question.
I don't know how to find out. I think we'll get everything. It'll be a minute.
Make a motion that we accept the July 12, 2018 minutes?
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
We still have a few minutes, so let's look at July 18 minute meetings. They get thicker though, the dates go on. I have a motion to accept the minute meetings of July 18. Make a motion that we accept the minutes of July 18, 2018. A second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Hey Chris. Page two, at the bottom. The discussion about the trees, where it says, homeowner asks would be able to cut down trees. Is that sentence written correctly in what you said? When you're looking at the bottom of page two of this one?
Yeah.
It says he was talking about tree cutting, right? At the bottom of page two.
Okay.
Cut down trees in the backyard if they want some sort of response. Okay. Is it the same what we said? You responded that the board would look at making a condition to the permit that they could not.
Right. And also they asked about summer pools and...
Right. Pools. Is it written the way we should write it? Just to make sure what you said is written correctly.
A condition would be a condition. Right. Making a condition. Imposing a condition.
That they could not. Oh, okay, that they...all right, got it.
Right.
The homeowner gave me new home, not existing home. I make a motion that we accept the minutes of August 1.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And it's 7:11, so we have four minutes for our next hearing, so why don't we look at the August 15 minutes?
Are there no August, June 20 minutes?
We do not have those.
Yeah, I didn't quite get them done. That was the meeting where we did nothing but approve minutes. So I just figured I'd whip them out at the end if I could.
That would've been the easy package.
You get a frog, I like.
Yeah, I didn't make this meeting. You left this hanging.
I did, Joe.
Yeah, especially this one.
I know.
This is a big one.
It wasn't there either, this one.
Look at this.
At least we did a lot of talking, maybe.
Amy, slight typo at the top. Says an associate number on the...
Oh, I used an old template. All right, I'll fix that.
Is that an error anywhere else?
That's the first time I saw it.
You don't say, is it okay in the other ones?
Yes.
Okay.
There she is.
Just the front right of this one.
Only today's project.
Is that sentence on page three complete? With the existing prior to restriction? Is there any new equipment?
No.
No, so that's fine, that's fine?
Yeah.
Okay. Any issues with this?
I missed a good hearing.
I don't see anything.
I missed a good hearing with the...
There is on the second page, bottom paragraph, second, top paragraph, third, in the last sentence, you cannot have a door that says communicating between them?
Yes.
Should be connected between them. Wouldn't be communicating between them. Yeah, that's true.
Okay.
Yeah, be connected between them.
Oh, the door can be...I missed that. So you can...yeah, you have it there.
Unless it was something they were trying to do. Unless it was something they were trying to do. Well, I can make a motion to accept the minutes as amended for August 15, 2018. A second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
It's now 7:16, and we have a new public notice for 4th Hills, 6th Hill Street. Can you read that, Joe?
Notice hereby given in accordance with Chapter 48 of the Massachusetts General Laws, and any and all amendments thereto, that a public hearing will be held by the zoning board of appeals in room...well, the room is changed, right?
Yes.
Check, say, room 124?
G, G-10.
Say again?
Give the room.
Well, that was the initial hearing, right? And it was held in that room.
Oh, okay. All right, so room 124, Norfolk Municipal Building, on Wednesday, September 19, 2018, for the following application, Al Corregliere for 29 Valley LLC at 7:45. Am I reading the wrong one?
You're reading the wrong one.
Anyway.
You want 4th, 6th Hill Street.
Oh, okay. It says 6th Hill Street.
That is, it was a different...
Okay, I'm sorry. My mistake.
That's the one I did.
I backed up. It's the fat one.
Well, he moved my folders around. I had it all in order.
Right. Notice hereby given in accordance with Chapter 48 of the Massachusetts General Laws, and any and all amendments thereto, that a public hearing will be held by the zoning board of appeals in room 124, at the Norfolk Municipal Building, on Wednesday, September 19, 2018, for the following application, Nathaniel Hunter at 7:15 PM for special permits pursuant to MGL, Chapter 48, Section 9, as amended in accordance with Section J 7A 2B of the Norfolk zoning laws, to allow contractor headquarters in all highway area to allow outdoor storage of more than three commercial vehicles, limited to the rear yard, with a minimum 30,000 square feet of land area for property located at 6th Hill Street. Assessors map 25, block 84, lot 7, in the C 1D zoning district.
Thank you. Nathaniel Hunter has decided that he's...he was liked, he's going to go for a voluntary site plan review. Normally, new businesses are required to do a site plan review. The building commissioner had reviewed an F 11A form, which is what new businesses have to fill out in town. He deemed that the property did not need a site plan review, but after review, it was suggested to Mr. Hunter, because of the type of business he was going to be doing, the amount of traffic, his application talks to possibly renting out spaces in this commercial building to others, that it would behoove him to get site plan approval before he comes to the ZBA with his special permit request and section six of Chapter 40 finding. So he is going to go before the planning board for a site plan review. Once that is approved, or disapproved, depending on how it becomes, he will come to the zoning board for a special permit and possibly a finding. So that will take probably up to three months. So he's asked for us to continue the public hearing until December 5th of 2018. So could I have a motion to continue that?
First, a clarification, too. When I was reading this, I realized that he's also asking for a special permit in accordance with F 3A as well? Does it reference to 4th Hill Street?
Correct.
Yeah, so I can fully read the second part.
Should we finish?
Sure. All right. So the applicant has also requested a special permit pursuant to MGL, Chapter 40, Section 9, as amended in accordance with Section F 3A of the Norfolk zoning laws, to allow a nonconforming use to be changed to another specified nonconforming use, not specifically...excuse me, not substantially different in character, no more detrimental or objectionable to a neighborhood for property located at 4th Hill Street, assessors map 25, block 84, lot 4, in the C 1D zoning district. I missed that clarification, sorry.
Could I have a motion for continuous until 12:05?
I don't want to do it at 20:00.
12:05 at 7 o'clock PM. We'll do both together. We do both together. At 7 o'clock PM.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
We now have a 10 minutes before we hear at 34 Birch Street, so why don't we take a 10 minute recess if we could, and we'll reconvene at 7:30.
7:31.
Could I, Joe, could you read us the public hearing for 34 Birch Street?
Of course. I won't touch your folders. You got the right folder? Notice hereby given in accordance with Chapter 48 of the Massachusetts General Laws, and any and all amendments thereto, that a public hearing will be held by the zoning board of appeals, in room 124, Norfolk Municipal Building, on Wednesdays, September 19, 2018, for the following application, James Mannahan at 7:30 PM for the special permit pursuant to MGL, Section 48, excuse me, Chapter 48, Section 9, as amended, and Section 4, F dot 4 dot A of the Norfolk zoning laws, to allow the alteration or enlargement of an existing nonconforming structure, which does not violate the setback coverage or height requirements of Section E 1D, but does not violate those requirements to a greater extent than the original structure. The property is located at 34 Birch Road, assessors map 19, block 62, lot 44, in the R3 zoning district.
Thank you. Do we have anybody here from Birch Street?
Really?
No presentation? We need presentation. Is he upstairs?
Yeah, let me go.
We're going to take a 10 minute recess, okay? We have our folks from 34 Birch Street?
Yes.
Hi. Come on up.
I'm up.
You can grab a chair if you don't understand. If you don't understand, you can. Want to put you on the hot seat?
I'll grab a chair.
So tell us what you're going to do.
Basically remodel the house. It's pretty decrepit. It stands now. Looking to improve the size of the second floor on one side. The left side stays the same, but I'm not changing the existing footprint at all. Let's just go and make it the second floor on the right side have a little bit more headspace. But other than that, it's just a complete remodel of the house, and apparently it was required to come here because it's already nonconforming, because it's less than the setback to the side setback, so keeping the same exact footprint. I'm just going to resite it, windows, roof, and remodel the inside.
I think we got a letter from the Board of Health stating that the septic system, I think it's a cesspool system, it has passed Title V.
Correct.
What's the overall height, overall proposed height?
I don't have that on. It's going to be...it's about two feet higher than the existing peak that's there now.
Is it existing, a two-family, or a two-story, or is it a single story, the existing?
The top left picture there? Are you looking at that one?
This one up here?
That's existing completely.
Okay.
So the right side, the three windows and the roof are new. So the left side is the existing peak, the right side is going to be a little taller now.
It's within our bylaw, which I think you know is 45 feet, so it's within...
Way less than that.
Okay.
Way less than that.
And no additional decks are being added on?
Just rebuilding the same deck that's in the back now.
Okay.
A front portion stairs coming down off the front door. That's it.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
This is just all about setback.
All about setback?
Because it was previously...
It's an existing nonconforming, and the only reason it's not a matter of right is because setbacks don't meet our setback guidelines. What do you plan to start, if you get approved?
My next step from here, I guess, is to resubmit to the planning board, I mean, to the building department for their final approval, and then immediately, as soon as I can get their approval.
Any more questions?
When you're saying left side of the house, is that left side if we're looking at the house from Birch Road, from the street?
Yep.
The farmer's porch is to the rear, or to the front?
It's a deck, I think. That little porch is to the front, there's a bigger deck to the rear.
Okay, that was, there was one there previously?
Yes.
On the front?
Not on the front. I'm just building a stoop, just enough to get a landing and stairs to come down.
So does the front, this new front porch come out further than the existing?
It does, but from what I understand, from talking to the building department, I'm allowed to create just enough access for us for a landing and stairs.
Correct.
I'm not worrying about that setback.
What is that?
So I'm not building.
What is that going to be?
What is what going to be?
What is that, what is that, what is that distance going to be? Our bylaw, I think, is four by six?
It's about the size of it, right, right, right. So I have to make it within that size of...the front porch can't be bigger than, I don't have it off the top of my head, but the front porch has to be within a certain guideline to...
Right.
We'll get a building permit without it, so...but yes, there is an exist, there's not an existing front door right there now, so I'm adding a front door to it. So I just wanted to put landing, the landing instead of stairs coming down.
Okay, just, I would, just make sure, if you need to know that bylaw, we can get it, but you definitely want to make sure your front...
Right.
Doesn't extend, extend further than that.
John has already talked to me about it, yes, so that'll be part of his conditions of approval, I'm sure.
You know what would be good is, for our records, and I look at, I guess it's, I guess it's right here, correct? This is what I'm looking at?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
If you could give us a measurement on that and send it to Amy?
Yep.
What that exactly is, so we can record this part of our findings?
Yes.
Okay?
Excuse me, sorry, I don't read too drunk. I live at 36 Birch Road. I'm sorry I'm late. I just wanted to know if there's anything I missed. I apologize.
Okay. Are you a Rebsan, are you a butter?
Rebsan.
Okay, we haven't got, we haven't got to the butters yet, so have a seat, we'll make sure.
Thank you.
Okay? Thank you. Welcome. Any other questions?
What we're looking for is relief, or what's, is section F 4A, is that basically what this is all about?
Correct.
Okay.
I have no other questions? Could I have a motion to close the public hearing? No, not, sorry. First, we'll go to the butters. Any, we obviously have one butter. Come on up. Do you have to state your name and your address if you wouldn't mind?
Of course. Stevens, now, 36 Birch Road.
Okay.
Just trying to figure out what the game plan is. I know there's some conditions involved. We don't want to see any more trees come down. And then the setbacks are kind of iffy to begin with, so we're trying to figure that out as well.
Okay. The home the applicant is proposing is on the same footprint as the existing house?
Right. Are they going up a little higher than they were going to?
Yes, they are.
Okay.
But they're within the zoning bylaws of the town.
Okay.
The only question was in the front. We've asked him, when you came in, what the distance is going to be from the house for the front step, because that approach is on to the setback. But you're allowed to have a landing, the bylaws allow, so I just asked him to verify that landing is within our footprint.
Right.
But there will be, do you plan on doing any kind of tree work or anything to the property?
I did already. What's done now is, all I planned on doing, was just to clear the front yard and create more of a backyard, because it was pretty overgrown, to the point where there were trees like this big within a foot of the house. So I had a clear space to work, and also just to create a little bit of a yard as well, so...but what's done now is all I planned on doing.
So we currently are dealing with a flooding issue, with drainage coming down off of ash, so I don't know what this new proposed plan is going to cause. Is there a drainage plan, a French drain, or anything that you're planning on figuring out?
From what you mean, coming down into the yard?
Yeah, basically, everything washes down, and then lands in that circle, so that's a concern. I've already talked to Bob at the water department about this, so...
Amy, can you put this over here?
Yeah.
Can you show us where you are?
Of course.
Give us an idea. Come on up here. Yeah. All right, so the street is over here, Birch Road is on the left side.
Right, so the end of Birch Road, basically, so we're up here.
So where would your house be, right?
Up top.
Okay.
So ash would be here, correct? Oh, no, ash is up here, right? So everything's washing down.
Okay.
I'm just concerned about the water issue.
You're not changing the topography of the property? So he's not changing the topography of the property?
Right, right, but problem is, whatever drainage comes off the gutters and whatnot is going to be addition to what we're already dealing with, so that's what I'm trying to figure out.
That's your question?
Yeah.
It's the same footprint, so it'll be the same gutter system, just a little higher, just the same footprint of...
Right.
Yeah, if you're not changing that footprint, I don't think you'd get one runoff.
Probably not, but I had to come here just to...
No.
State the fact that's what we're dealing with.
Fair question.
Everything washes down, so...and for your tenant, or whoever, you want to move in, that's also going to be great, we neighbors, bro. But whoever moves in, and it's going to be an issue come wintertime, it freezes, and it's going to be an issue, so that's all.
Okay. Do you plan on, it has an existing gravel driveway, do you plan on keep, keeping that?
That's more than likely going to be paved.
Going to be paved, okay.
Which, again, will create quite a slope down towards our driveway, and that's going to be an area of concern.
Is your, are you up higher? I got the impression you're higher than him.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
So if you go by 34...
The road is low.
Yeah.
Yeah, so if you go by 34, keep going, and we're up the hill. We're dealing with some runoff from ash that's now washing down throughout that whole area,
But yes, there is an exist, there's not an existing front door right there now, so I'm adding a front door to it. So, I just wanted to put landing, the landing instead of stairs coming down.
Okay, just, I would, just make sure, if you need to know that bylaw, we can get it, but you definitely want to make sure your front
Right.
doesn't extend, extend further than that.
John has already talked to me about it, yes, so.
Okay.
That'll be part of his conditions of approval, I'm sure.
You know what would be good is, for our records, and I look at, I guess it's, I guess it's right here, correct? This is what I'm looking at?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
If you could give us a measurement on that and send it to Amy?
Yep.
What that exactly is, so we can record this part of our findings?
Yes.
Okay?
Excuse me, sorry, I don't read too drunk. I live at 36 Berch Road, I'm sorry I'm late, I just wanted to know if there's anything I missed, I apologize, I'm late.
Okay, are you a Rebsan, are you a Butters?
Rebsan.
Okay, we haven't got, we haven't got to the Butters yet, so. Have a seat, we'll make sure.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Welcome. Any other questions?
What we're looking for is relief, what, is section F4A, is that basically what this is all about?
Correct.
Okay.
I have no other questions? Could I have a motion to close the public hearing? No, not, sorry, first, we'll go to the Butters. Any, we obviously have one Butter. Come on up. You have to state your name and your address if you wouldn't mind.
Of course, Stevens, now, 36 Berch Road.
Okay.
Just trying to figure out what the game plan is, I know there's some conditions involved, we don't want to see any more trees come down. And then, the setbacks are kind of iffy to begin with, so we're trying to figure that out as well.
Okay. The home the applicant is proposing is on the same footprint as the existing house.
Right, are they going up a little higher than they were going to?
Yes, they are.
Okay.
But they're within the zoning bylaws of the town.
Okay.
The only question was in the front, we've asked him, when you came in, what the distance is gonna be from the house for the front step, because that approach is on to the setback. But you're allowed to have a landing, the bylaws allow, so I just asked him to verify that landing is within our
Right.
footprint.
Okay.
But there will be, do you plan on doing any kind of tree work or anything to the property?
I did already. What's done now is, all I planned on doing, it was just to clear the front yard and create more of a backyard, because it was pretty overgrown, to the point where there were trees like this big within a foot of the house. So, I had a clear space to work, and also just to create a little bit of a yard as well, so. But what's done now is, is all I planned on doing.
So, we currently are dealing with a flooding issue, with drainage coming down off of ash, so I don't know what this new proposed plan's gonna cause, is there a drainage plan, a French drain, or anything that you're planning on figuring out?
From what you mean, coming down into the?
Yeah, yeah, basically, everything washes down and then lands in that circle, so that's a concern. I've already talked to Bob at the water department about this, so.
Amy, can you put this over here?
Yeah.
Can you show us where you are?
Of course.
Give us an idea. Come on up here. Yeah. All right, so the street is over here, Berch Road is on the left side.
Right, so the end of Berch Road, basically, so we're up here.
So, where would your house be, right?
Up top.
Okay.
So, ash would be here, correct? Oh, no, ash is up here, right? So, everything's washing down.
Okay.
I'm just concerned about the water issue.
You're not changing the topography of the property, so he's not changing the topography of the property?
Right, right, but the problem is, whatever drainage comes off the gutters and whatnot is gonna be addition to what we're already dealing with, so that's, that's what I'm trying to figure out.
That's your question?
Yeah.
It's the same footprint, so it'll be the same gutter system, just a little higher, just the same, same footprint of.
Right.
Yeah, if you're not changing that footprint, then, I don't think you'd get one runoff.
Probably not, but I had to come here just to
No.
State the fact that we're dealing with.
Fair question.
Everything washes down, so.
Okay.
And for your tenant, or whoever, you want to move in, that's also gonna be great neighbors, bro. But whoever moves in, and it's gonna be an issue come wintertime, it freezes, it's gonna be an issue, so that's all.
Okay. Do you plan on, it has an existing gravel driveway, do you plan on keep, keeping that?
That's more than likely gonna be paved.
Gonna be paved, okay.
Which, again, will create quite a slope down towards our driveway, and that's gonna be an area of concern.
Is your, are you up higher? I got the impression you're higher than him.
Yes, yes, so if you go by 34.
The road is low.
Yeah.
Yeah, so if you go by 34 and keep going, then we're up the hill. We're dealing with some runoff from ash that's now washing down throughout that whole area, so. Just trying to make sure everything is squared away. As far as the design and everything, that's awesome. I'm a builder as well, you did a nice job. More than happy to give him that, at a void, but just the drainage thing.
Is the street flooding in that area now? That's the bottom of your?
A little bit, there's a washout now. If there was to be a paved driveway with the incline the way it is, it would be a significant concern, for sure.
My question is, where is the water, water settling then? This water that's?
Well, there's a, I don't wanna say culvert, but between our, the two properties, between the one he owns and the one I, we own, there's a, there's a little area of depression.
Right, and that water is still in there?
Right, so.
During the winter, it gets, like, the ground's frozen?
Right.
It sits on top of that?
Right.
So, have you talked to the highway department or anything?
I spoke to Bob several times, I sent him the video of the flooding and everything of all our concerns.
No suggestion as to what?
Haven't heard back from him.
Are there storm drains in the street?
Not in the circle, no. So, like I said, I love the plan that you came up with, everything was great, I'm more than happy to see this house get renovated, but I'm concerned about the drainage. That's all.
But that sounds like an issue that you want to tackle with the apartments more, even though the property's being?
Right, but they told me to come here and make sure that.
Stayed there?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I'm just saying that, no, they should be looked at, I don't know if there's something about going underneath the road and getting it to another spot, no, it's got no place to go.
I don't know, I don't know, but like I said, Amy.
Yeah, so looking at the road there, the road is like the low point, and it pitches up to the right, and he is up, kind of above the screen, even higher that direction, so everything kind of sheds down this way to the, to the road.
Does the road, but the road doesn't really flood, maybe a little bit, but?
It's starting to, everything's starting to wash down from ash down our driveway in that circle, so.
But just a part of clarification, so you're not concerned about his property affecting your property, you're concerned about his property affecting what's running out onto the street?
Well, if it's gonna be paved, how much is gonna be paved, because that just gives the water that much more of a chance to?
To go out to the street, but not, you're upgrading from him, so?
No, 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 we're, basically, our driveway is, we share, it's a dead-end circle.
Oh, okay, right, oh.
It's like, his foundation, your foundation's not in, generally, here at all.
No, no, I just want to make sure the drainage thing gets squared away, and again, I, I don't want to.
I think if the water starts hitting the road in a big way, it becomes Bob's problem.
Yes, it's a public way.
Yeah.
So, I just had to come here.
And it is a public way, right?
It is.
Okay, right.
So.
And they told you to come here and talk to us about this?
I was advised to, yes.
Okay.
The town didn't advise me, well, somebody else did.
Oh, okay.
Fair enough.
It'll be noted.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from the Butters and the public? Any more questions for the applicant from the board?
Yep.
Okay. Can we have a motion to close the public hearing?
Move to close the public hearing for 34 Berch Street at 7:48 PM.
All those in favor?
Chris, I have a question, we need the dimensions for the farmer's porch first.
I think, I think we can, we will, I think we can condition it, I mean, it's only a landing, the building code states that he has, he can only do a landing, and we had one on Needham Street, I think you were on the board?
Yeah.
And as you remember, Bullock had to, even though we approved the special permit, he was required then to cut back when he built it, because his as-built showed it larger than the, I think it was a three by six, I think it's a three by six, if I'm not mistaken.
Was that the one off the back of the house?
Yes.
Okay.
So, I think in this case, we'll condition it with that, and then we'll make sure the zoning enforcement officer knows to verify.
Okay.
But good question. Any other questions? Okay, we have a motion to close the public hearing, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We will, if we get, I don't know if we'll do it tonight, but if not, in our next meeting, we'll deliberate this, and then there's a 21-day waiting period?
Okay.
And then you go back to the building department.
Mr. Chairman, do we have time to do this tonight?
I think we do, if the board so pleases, we can do this tonight after we hear our next open, our next hearing.
Yeah, I will get this done tonight.
Okay.
That'd be fabulous, appreciate that.
All right, thank you.
Thank you much, guys.
You have good luck.
Is this a new hearing?
Does he have a six-hill street appeal?
This is a new hearing.
Right, no, but this one's a continuation when we already opened, right?
No.
No, it's another new hearing, so we'll read this again.
Yes.
Notice hereby given, in accordance with Chapter 48 of the Massachusetts General Law, and any and all amendments thereto, that a public hearing will be held by the zoning law appeals in Rule 124 of the Norfolk Zoning Law on Wednesday, 7/19/20 to the following application. Al Greglieri for 29 Valley LLC at 7:45 PM for an appeal of the Building Commissioner of Zoning Enforcement Officer's decision according to Massachusetts General Law is Chapter 48, Section 8, and Norfolk Zoning Bylaw is Section F dot 11 dot A dot 1, conditions of non-equability for a property addressed at Six Hill Street, preference assessors map 25, block 84, lot 7, and C1D zoning district.
Okay. This application was, was, the Six Hill Street, as we talked about earlier, an F11A was filed with the building department. For some reason, the F11As in Norfolk are not stamped after a determination is made by the building commissioner. But our appeal process is 30 days, so the question was, when does an appeal process begin? Because if it's not stamped, when, what's the date? Section 13 or Chapter 40 of the Mass General Law says that the town clerk's stamp is basically the determining factor when a, when an appeal period starts. So, Al Greglieri, who attended our last public hearing for Six Hill Street last month, then filed an appeal stating that that was the hearing when he was notified that an F11A was filled out, he was appealing that F11A, what the determination was. Because four and Six Hill Street have now decided to go through the process with the planning board of a site plan review, he is, he is willing to continue his appeal based on that, which was his concern. So, that's why he's asked us to continue his appeal, in other words, he's waiting to see if the process goes forward with the planning board, and if it does, there would be really no reason for him to appeal.
He would withdraw.
Because the planning board will be looking at this, and the F11A will not be taken into consideration, it is actually, it will not be used as a device during that hearing.
He would withdraw this at that point?
So, and then he would withdraw at that point, but obviously, he wants to maintain his standing by not withdrawing at this point.
So, he continues?
So, we ask for a continuance until 12:05 at 7:05 PM. So moved. Second.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. At the board's wishes, if you'd like to deliberate.
Yes.
Good for us.
We have audience members here, any Butters for this?
We should ask.
Are you guys here?
No, no, we were here before the six.
Okay.
And both of them have been kind of continued, we're just residents in the area, so I think we're all done, thank you very much.
Okay, did you, were you notified that other continuances?
I just heard you say.
Oh, so you didn't hear earlier?
Yeah, I think I saw it, but I didn't hear, because I wanted to come and get a feel for the process and understand how things are, so.
Okay, it will be going before the planning board, so you should probably look at the calendar, I don't know when the planning board plans on hearing that, I assume it's going to be either at the end of this month or the first week in October, but you could check with Betsy in the land use office, and she can tell you when it's on the calendar, and that would be, I think, where you want to go to your next set of hearings.
Thank you very much.
Okay? Have a good evening. Okay. 34 Berch Street. Do we want to pull together some findings and facts?
Yeah, let's do some finding, the property is located at 34 Berch Road, assesses map 19, block 62, lot 44, in the R3 zoning district. The applicant is looking for relief from section 4, F4 dot A, to allow the alteration or enlargement of an existing non-conforming structure which does violate a setback coverage or height requirements of Section E 1B, but does not violate those requirements to a great extent in the original structure. That's basically the gist of what you're trying to accomplish here.
And the side setback on the plan he gave us, which is, I don't think it has a, doesn't really have a code to it, but is a plot plan, shows that the side setback is 10 feet 4 inches, and there appears to be a stoop that's 8 feet 4 inches.
Mr. Chairman, you may want to sign this and enter it as evidence into the findings of fact, as well as that other document you might want to sign that, after that is findings of fact as well.
You can give the official folder, right?
Yes. We will condition, we will condition the permit based on the front porch?
I get my own package.
Being just a landing for the building code and the town door bylaws?
Quick question on that, just to, is he, is he proposing an entire farmer's porch or just a stoop on the front of this house?
Amy, can you go back to the?
It's this, right?
Yes, I think.
That?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, this is what he's proposing, but it's obviously larger than a stoop.
Yeah, so it goes to the end of the house?
Yeah, it goes from here to the end.
But we're not gonna let him do that, right?
Yeah.
We can't let him?
No, no, it's gotta be a stoop.
He can't do that, right?
Bob won't let him.
Yeah.
Just, if he does, he'll take it down.
Yeah. So, we'll condition it based on that, then he will not be able to do that.
It's gotta be, it's gonna be pursued to, he's gonna provide dimensions for that stoop.
Correct. Anyway, I've asked him to buy those to us, so he should be presenting those to you.
Now, he can still do that roof as an architectural detail.
Yeah, the roof he can do.
Yeah.
That's not, that's not.
Doesn't preclude that.
It's just, it's encroaching the non-conforming.
Non-conformity a lot, yeah, all right. And I think he wants to do that to give
Oh, sure.
Some texture, that adds to the attractiveness of the building as well.
Mm-hmm. And actually, I think at Needham Street, they exceeded the front as well, and had to redo all their footings. The building commissioner made a redo of the whole front slope of the roof, because they, they came out too far, and he had to, actually, he had to cut back his roof line and bring it more vertical.
This may affect his roof line, too.
Yeah, he may have to, this may be a problem for him, but we'll make sure that gets taken care of.
As far as the flooding issue, that's out of our jurisdiction, I mean, we can, I don't know if you sent, we sent a note to the building department, say testimony, we hear there was concerns about flooding on the street, I mean, that's clearly out of our jurisdiction.
It sounds like it's just a memo to, maybe, I'll write a memo to Bob McGee, because it sounds like it's a road issue, has nothing to do, there's no restriction here on him changing his driveway from a gravel driveway to a paved driveway, so it really isn't, it isn't his problem, it's actually, if the road floods there, it becomes a town problem because it's a public road.
Is there a potential issue with impervious coverage versus the dimension of a?
He's not violating the ground cover.
He's not violating the, you can't have any more than 25% of the surface, so he's not violating that.
Okay.
So, he's not, but that's our, that's our bylaw, so it doesn't appear as if he's doing that.
Okay.
So, he's just changing from?
So, the question is, drainage is not a zoning question?
Correct.
Period.
Is that calculated anywhere, though, in terms of the 25%?
Good question, I didn't see that.
Yeah, I didn't know.
I didn't see that calculation.
Well, but right now, it's just a driveway, he said he may pave it, but right now, I'm not so certain that he actually has a plan to pave it, so it could, it might not get paved.
Yeah, but I don't see it violating 25% if he did already. Yeah, no.
But he doesn't have to calculate that if he's not gonna pave it.
Right.
The question is, is he gonna pave it, and the answer is, we don't know.
So, it would be a question if he pulls a permit?
That's right.
Yeah.
Do you have to pull, you have to pull permits to pave driveway?
Other than to put a, to put a driveway, to put an asphalt driveway down, I think you have to pull a permit.
Yeah, if it's not already there, I would hope he would have.
All the driveways should look like the chairman's new driveway that he spent thousands of dollars putting in, it's beautiful, it's.
I did notice that, I ran back.
It's crushed, it looks like crushed stone, but there's a layer of pavement underneath, so the stones stick, and they don't move, and it's, it's beautiful.
Very nice. Is that a chip seal?
Chip seal, yeah.
Chip and seal?
Chip and seal.
It's just as expensive to replace, too.
You don't look at it.
The chairman will be in heaven by then.
That's right.
If he needs to be replaced.
That's right, that's right, hopefully.
You think he's going to heaven?
I got a, I got a direct pass, I got an easy pass. All right, do we have any other findings and facts? Existing footprint, what we've remained, he's rebuilding the existing porch in its current size on the rear of the house.
He did articulate that the height is within the restriction.
Within the zoning.
Does not exceed 45 feet.
Correct.
Does it matter that the Butter is in support of this project in spite of the drainage question?
That's a finding of facts, there's no opposition, the one neighborhood here was in support of the building.
Yeah, I think that water issue is just that, it's not, it's not threatening his foundation or his house, I think he just sees it's probably that type of flooding that goes on down there, and then like in the wintertime, it's probably worse, and the ground is, like, you know, the perma freezes out, and it's just like, it's not gonna go away for a while, but if it touches the road, I don't know if any.
As Devin said, it's not gonna change much to the amount of water coming off of the property, as there's.
I wonder how that, I wonder how that couple sack looked yesterday, after the rain here, did it flood?
That'd be a good question, yeah, I mean, things may dream well at this time of the year, but other times of the year.
The lot's 19,134 square feet, I don't know if you said that right?
I did not.
Do you want to convert that to acres for you? That would be 0.439 acres.
Very good, Bob.
Give or take.
I told you we should keep them around.
Tell ya? As Foghorn Lakeland says, that boy's about as bright, sharp as a bowling ball.
Mr. Chairman, when we, when we gave the setbacks earlier, did we specify side versus front yard setbacks?
Did he specify?
Did we, when we were finding the fact?
We did not yet, we only said, I only gave the 1, the 10-4, and the 8-4, but you can give the other setbacks if you want.
I just think we, did we specify that those were the side yard setbacks?
Yes, he did.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
I, I, should we also specify just the other setbacks?
We, we entered this, uh.
We entered into the record.
Into the record, so all the numbers are there. That's why we did that, so that we capture all of this, this information. Unless, he has to go by this now, this is a part of the findings of fact.
But you know, Devin should be able to state those if Bob could shake the acres off the map, right? That's fair, I mean, I gotta be fair to everybody, right?
Go ahead.
No, that's alright, Devin, I think, I think we get.
It doesn't need to be redundant.
Right. I need, I need your crack.
Uh, in the standard language, who's writing this up? Joe?
I am.
Joe, the standard language for dumpsters and at the time and.
Right, lighting will not.
No lighting.
Lighting will not encroach upon the neighbors.
Right.
Um, yeah, the dumpster will be, I think, I think the bylaw is constant, and the dumpster will leave within six months.
No, I got the word of use before.
Okay, alright. Do we have, do you have our, is she with the application, is application here?
I mean, the actual.
Yeah, Chris needs to read the, um, the worksheet.
Uses in harmony in general person intend the bylaw, the applicant answered proposed uses within the intent of the bylaw, which is F four A, right, Bob?
Absolutely.
The use, uses in appropriate location is not detrimental to the neighborhood, it does not significantly alter the character of the zoning district. The applicant answered proposed use is consistent with the neighborhood. Did he tell us what zone, do we have a?
R three.
It's in the notice appearing?
Yeah, it's R three.
It's in the R three, so that would be a finding of fact as well, this is in the R three.
I mentioned that.
Did you?
Pretty much, it's in the notice gets into the finding of facts.
Adequate and appropriate facilities will provide for the proper operation of the proposed use. The applicant answered, all utilities shall support proper operation of the proposed use. Four, the proposed use would not be detrimental or offensive to the adjoining zoning districts and neighboring properties due to the effects of lighting, odor, smoke, noise, sewage, refuse material, visual, or other nuisances. The applicant answered proposed use will not, will be a vast improvement to existing site conditions and will enhance the neighborhood look and appeal. And he did note that he did already take down trees, which the one Butter had no issue with.
With the finding of fact.
And, um, and I, and I don't think the, the neighbor had any issue with the height change, which I can't.
It's not on his, uh.
It is not his drawing, but it appears, it appears, looking if you, if you scale out, it's probably only three or four feet higher than the existing roof line.
Yeah, we don't have an existing roof line officially, right?
But it's gotta be within the forty-five.
We don't want it to be within forty-five.
And the testimony was that it's not, it does not exceed forty-five.
Right.
Right.
Proposed use would not cause undue traffic congestion in the immediate area. The applicant answered, proposed use will not alter existing traffic conditions. And six, the proposed site plan will be filed with the approval from the planning board and proper number of copies submitted with the application for a special permit to the Board of Appeals. Applicants by the pen has submitted the application, the site plan. And the uses in harmony of nineteen ninety-two master plan and its update. And the applicant responded, the proposal is consistent with our nineteen ninety-two Norfolk master plan.
And I actually put that in, I will be putting all that in the decision.
Okay, good. Alright. So do I have a motion to grant the special permit for thirty-four Birch Street? Joe, do you wanna?
No, you read it, I'll, I'll second it.
Motion?
Uh, move to grant a special permit to James Linehan regarding the property located at thirty-four Birch Road, and says as map nineteen, block sixty-two, lot forty-four, in the R three zoning district. Requesting immunity from section F four A.
Second. I have a second.
Second.
Okay, discussion. This is a motion to grant the special permit. Um, I'll start to my right. Mike?
Yes to grant.
Yes to grant.
Joe?
Yes to grant.
Yes to grant.
Yes to grant.
Okay. Uh, we, and chairman, yes to grant. And in this case, we have to, we have five members, so Maduro will be a voting member. Bob, I think you've had lots of practice, that you'll be our alternate member, okay?
You got it, boss.
Okay, so it passes?
Tell me, tell me, read it back to you in a different language or something, do you?
Very good. Alright, do I have a motion to close the zoning Board of Appeals meeting at eight oh seven P M, eleven eighteen?
Wow, that's good timing. So moved?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Good evening.